And remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded as well as broadcast live on local access TV. Okay, so I do not have a chair's report other than to say welcome back, everybody. Hope you all had a great summer. And that's about it. We have some minutes that were sent around. Any comments on the minutes? Questions? Good to me, so we'll consider those good. There are warrants on the table. If anybody has any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Yes, Dr. Berthium, I just did want to call to the committee's attention. One of the warrants is for the first payment on our lease for the installation of the wireless. We did that over a multi-year purchase agreement and that wireless system has been installed at the primary school and is operational, and we're very excited to have that and taking good advantage of it already.
Okay. This is Calm's superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. Welcome back, everyone, indeed. And we certainly had a great opening session. I really want to begin with a lot of thank yous because there's so many well-deserved ones out there. I think that I want to really thank our custodian and maintenance crew and our secretarial staff this summer for all the work that they did getting ready for these opening days. You know, our facilities always get a good summer cleaning and lots of waxing and polishing going on, and I know everyone worked very diligently and the schools look very good. Also, I wanted to let you know that I have an enrollment update for you. I put it together. This will continue to be dynamic as we go through these opening weeks of school and everything. I've provided you a historical view, at least back to October of 2012. And remember, October 1 is the official date that we do the benchmarking of enrollment and file many reports with the state. But I also provided for you where we ended up in June and then what it is looking like now. And what it is looking like now is that the primary school has gone from 515 students in the building to 539 at this point in time. We did see a pretty significant increase in first grade going to second grade. There were nine new enrollees in that particular grade, seven in second grade going to third grade. There were no choice openings at all. That's all new enrollment within our system. And so that has really bumped us up. We're, at this point in time, in terms of what we were projecting, we're right at 15 students above what we were projecting when we ended the school year last year, given what we knew. You can see that our kindergarten, we were, I usually plan on right at 110 students, so we're sitting at 113 in kindergarten this year, which is right there in that area that we generally expect. We saw, you see the increase also from grade three to grade four. I do want to remember, remind everyone that we did open four choice slots in that particular grade, but you can see that we're up by eight students now. That population, though increased, is still within our five-section range. Some of these are pushing 27 students as you look at the enrollments, given that we have five teachers at every grade level, from kindergarten on through eighth grade. You can see at the eighth grade also showed an increase of nine students. I know there were some reclassifications within that, but there were also some additional move-ins. So our high school population right now, including the 21 students that are placed out of district for specialized programs to meet their individual needs, is at 580. In terms of present enrolled and attending in the building right now, 559 students in grades eight through 12. I also wanted to point out that Turkey Hill Middle School is at 185, including the three students that were placed out of district. 482 is the daily attendance and enrollment there at this point in time. And once again, that's right within our projected range that we were anticipating. So we had opened 10 choice slots coming into this year. We had applications for all of those. However, we only, at this point in time, have seven that have actually enrolled and acted upon those. But the numbers were basically closing choice down at the end of this week because it's really important for students, if they're going to join us, to start at this time of year. And so that may change based upon what we see happen towards the end of the week, but that's an overview. And as you can see, that we've increased from a population of, at the end of last year, of 1,593 to now 1,604. So that's our population enrollment update for you at this point in time, and we're certainly continuing to look at these numbers and keep you updated as we go through these initial weeks and months of the school year as well. So I'll pause for any questions folks might have, if any.
I know last year's eighth grade was exceptionally large.
It was.
At 141 students.
Mm-hmm.
Now the ninth grade is 112. Is that a typical? I know we always lose kids.
Yeah.
At freshman year.
I did the factoring, and there were, in terms of holding, staying within the Lunenburg schools, there were some, what we refer to as reclassifications. So we might have had some students that perhaps aren't classified as ninth graders this year, who were eighth graders last year.
Okay.
But are still within our schools. Okay? So we have that population. And then when I factored out the students that had transferred out, we were right at our historical number.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to know, if we had about the typical number.
No, thank you for asking that, because we did look at that. The number would be 120 if it was straight retention.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on enrollment? Okay. Great.
I did want to really, we want to express our appreciation for the PTO for putting together the luncheon on Tuesday. The two professional development days at the beginning of the year were very full of professional development. It was really a valuable learning time. I've had a lot of very positive feedback from our faculty and staff in terms of, it's the first time we've put both of those days back-to-back at the beginning of the school year. And it didn't seem to impact our attendance. You know, that was one of the questions. We've traditionally done a three-day startup before the Labor Day holiday. This year, it was just a two-day, so that was a change. And I know that the school committee is requesting that we form a special advisory to look at the calendar this year. I think we'll be doing that in the next couple of months, and you'll probably be asking for individuals to serve on that committee from the community, as well as we'll be getting school representatives together as well. But we started out very strong. There were the typical things, adjustments in the scheduling of buses and those kinds of things, but everybody's been very responsive. We appreciate all the parents calling and saying, "This is our situation. Can you help us?" And we work to resolve all of those concerns. So everybody's working together to make sure that the students were well taken care of and buses were where they needed to be and everybody knew what that schedule was. I do want to also really, really express my appreciation to the parents and students who have been so great around our new traffic flow at the high school, because it was a change to go to one way in two different areas there and to be able to work through that. And the first day went fine because we had eighth grade come in first, and then later the 10th grade came in and said, "Oh, this is going to work out pretty well." Then the next day hit, which was really the first day everybody was doing that, and it was, it was pretty jammed up for a while. And we want to make sure that students stay safe, and one of the things we've been stressing is please pull up and pull ahead in front of TCP there and drop off on the sidewalk side and not be dropping students down by the field or what was the lawn where the new field's going in, just to keep everyone safe. But I was out there again this morning, and so this is now about day three of the new traffic plan, and it was just really remarkable how everybody had adjusted and everybody was being so helpful and cooperative and really appreciated that. I wanted to thank so many members of the other departments across the town, too, that assisted with us with putting that together. The fire department, the DPW, the Lunenburg Police, of course, were really beneficial in terms of helping put that plan together and make it a solid plan. And also in advising us, at one point in time, we had talked about maybe we needed to open Memorial Drive. You know, as we looked at that situation, it presented as many additional concerns as it might have resolved some concerns. And so, you know, base, if you were there today and could see how it was flowing, we were counseled patience, and I think that was very wise counsel. And as I said, I'm very appreciative to everyone for assisting with that and for the parents and students for their cooperation around it as well. So that's a great way to keep everyone safe.
Just a quick question on the traffic, because next Tuesday is the primary day. Have we thought about working with our police department on just making sure that we get people in and out for primary day next Tuesday to TCP?
I think that will be the next thing we start working on. So, yeah, that will be important, because, you know, the students start arriving at 7:00, and I know the poles start opening at that point in time, and that is a pretty congested time. So we'll want to develop a strategy around that. So, yeah, that one hadn't been on my.
Could people that are coming to vote park over the Brooks House in the library and then walk on the?
Well, that is one option for folks. To avoid the congestion would be to do that, I think.
Because they can walk all along without crossing that traffic.
Check with the library to make sure that wouldn't be a conflict for them as well.
Teen Center.
Just for that, it's only, what, about a half an hour?
Yeah, just to drop off.
Just during that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, just during, anybody who needs to come between 7:00 and 7:30 because they have to go to work or something.
Right.
If they were to park there.
They could avoid.
And they can walk on the sidewalk, either from the teen center or from the library, without having to cross.
Right.
I can't imagine trying to get through that and park and.
And then get out to go to work.
Yeah. It was much smoother this morning, though. It's remarkable what the change that's gone on in three days.
Yep, it was. I know the other thing that we were thinking about is also just knowing inclement weather will happen and particularly during the winter months, providing an option of a bus pass for December through March that parents and students might be able to take advantage of just during those bad weather months. So that would be another option that we could consider to alleviate some of the stress during the winter months. So typically, when we've sold bus passes, it's been for a year long and for the $180. So that would be about half that amount and would allow the students to be able to ride then, as I said, from December through March.
Is that a concern, about the students getting wet and cold walking from TCP down or because of the snow?
The concern was primarily just in terms of the walk down, because we've always maintained that area because there's been traffic across there regardless. So it's, we know that we'll be continuing to make sure that it's a clear walkway, but it was just, it's been expressed as a concern in terms of comfort and for the students. I hope you all were able to also see that we wanted to acknowledge and thank the Lunenburg Police Department for assisting us with the Alice training and scenario that we ran. So that was very helpful to have the officers in the classrooms as we did a variety of scenarios with the staff, giving feedback to the staff in terms of their use of various strategies and how they approached some of the new techniques, if you will, new options for responding that we had provided and opened up to them, so.
Just color from a couple of the people that took part in that was, it was the best training they've had.
I heard that as well.
They said it was absolutely phenomenal. So it is glad, as a parent, it's good to hear.
Well, we had had the opportunity to train all the administrators, as well as at least one faculty member from each building, along with the Lunenburg Police Department, when they sponsored the, it was a train-the-trainer model. And then, you know, that our principals really worked with Officer Connery, Sean Connery, from the Lunenburg Police Department, in putting together the presentations, and then the officer was there in order to respond to some questions on the first day. And then the Lunenburg Police Force was there in force. They were all there and able to support us as we ran those scenarios. So I think that immediate feedback loop that was provided through the scenario running and the feedback was a really beneficial model, so thank you for that.
It is really good for the parents to understand that, just how important that training was.
Right.
And more important than how important it was, how effective the people that took part felt it was, that they felt. And several of the pieces of feedback said, "I actually feel like I know what to do now," which is really, really powerful for parents who worry about these things.
Great, thank you. I don't think so. That's our update.
Our next item is the school building committee report.
Well, as everybody can see just driving by, we are significantly in, on our way. The, what we've been seeing for the last couple of weeks is the, you know, beginning of the staging of the site, and that means the first thing that was done was the removal of all the topsoil by our site contractor, Powell, which is, it's a benefit to have a local business that is able to provide us with the service. The reason is that they can, we don't need to store it on-site. They have the ability then of taking the topsoil off-site and storing it themselves and then bringing it back when we need to replant. So that was a benefit. In the next, the construction kickoff began on 8/13 with construction meetings that will now happen weekly on Wednesdays, and that's with our project manager, Shawman, our construction manager, representative of the architect, and the various contract folks. And, you know, it's a very good process, keeps communication going, problem solves, identifies, you know, what's coming next. So in the next three to four weeks, we'll be looking at utilities being put in to the site. And right now, they're completing the, the fence is complete, obviously. The scrim is being completed in certain areas so that, you know, our neighbors and the butters are not impacted. The temp field out front, which will, we're hoping to have ready for spring use, should be completed by mid-October. What we're doing there is providing it with a sod field that is, has an irrigation system and that, given that approach, we'll be able to hopefully have something of a practice field available. I'm sorry?
Fall.
I'm sorry, in fall of.
So it will be ready in the fall?
That's the target, to let the grass get established. Spring would be too soon, so they want to.
Next fall.
But this time next year.
Okay.
And we're committed to keeping the process open. The, our construction, our owner's project manager, Justin Lester, their folks are working with us to ensure that we have a three-week look-ahead available, both on the website and to the ledger, in order for folks to know what's coming up in the next couple of weeks as we go through the construction process, so that people have an idea of what to expect. And the school building committee is actually looking at some specs for a webcam capability for the project, so that people could, you know, log in and look at the construction as it's going along. And, you know, it seems pretty, the cost of it is not significant enough to prevent us from not seriously taking a look at it. So if people are curious as to, you know, taking a look, you can go on your computer and take a look at it. We do have a butters meeting scheduled tomorrow at 6:30 at TCP in the cafeteria. Although the butters got, you know, a particular invitation because they have particular interests, I'm certainly open to anybody that would want to come and get an update on the project and if there's anybody with questions that they want answered, it would finally, that would certainly be a good forum for folks to come and have their questions answered.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. Any questions?
There's also a Facebook page, right?
We do have a Facebook page that, again, all of that information that I've just described is also put on the Facebook page. I don't know if you've seen, but recently they had aerial shots done of the construction.
Yeah, those were really.
And they, they're posted on both the.
Website.
Website and the Facebook page. They're really quite spectacular, if you see them. We saw them today actually on a large monitor, and they're just, the resolution was scary.
Okay, new business. Do you have any access?
It was, it was from the Turkey Hill Middle School Media Center. It's some additional, basically the books that were being called from the collection. And most of them, the reasons for that are the age and condition, the last recorded circulation date, misleading information, they're being outdated in terms of that, and just lacks the value to the particular collection. So that's what it was, Dr. Berthium, in terms of just a statement of those books that are being recommended. I recommend that we declare these excess and remove them from the collection. And I know they do look at those that are usable and have current information of them. If we're able to donate those, we do do that as well, as opposed to just put them in the recycling.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. And old business, our first item is the superintendent's goals.
Just to review, and I think a clarification of one, at the time when I first presented this, I had certainly wanted to continue under student learning goals, the community service learning, professional development, and implementation that we're doing, that, to be honest, is a balancing of the more, the MCAS assessments and those kinds of measures of student learning in keeping with our mission. And so what I propose now for the particular goal around student growth is using the MCAS information that provides for the growth measure and that we will continue to maintain those at a high level and increase by one over the last, the average of the last four years. So that's what I'm recommending and proposing relative to the student learning goal, those two pieces for professional practice we had talked about, and I feel very good about this goal based upon the work that we did last year, is continuing with a minimum of six classroom visits in each building with the principal, assistant principal, or director of special services. And those will, we'll keep logs of those and on a monthly basis and just report that. We use that as we continue to work to improve our educator evaluation, which is a continuous improvement model, and to make sure that we have real good reliability and equal standards across the district in terms of how our principals and assistant principals are providing feedback and looking at instruction in the classroom with our teachers. And then the district improvement goal, I've revised to move it forward. It would, if adopted, by December 2014, we would be here to provide you a comprehensive plan around moving to a one-to-one mobile device model, some kind of one-to-one device for eventually our six-through-12 building. We know that we have some opportunity in terms of the opening of the new building there. We're also mindful about the sustainability of that, because devices need to be replaced on a regular basis. And so our recommendation would be to develop a very tight plan around how that would look and bring it to you for your consideration.
So the plan would be fully implemented in 2022, I thought I saw, FY '22?
Mm-hmm.
That seems a long ways away. Is that, I'm not sure that's a reasonable date. What drove the choice of that?
We were looking at the move-in date and then basically the replacement, getting into that replacement cycle and where to be firmly in place there, because what we want to avoid is bringing on so many devices in one year that have a life of about five years, four to five years. And actually, I'm sorry, it's three to four years is what they're saying the life of that will be, and then having to replace it for that entire population at the same time. So I was looking at how to roll it out and figured fullest implementation, it may be before that, but fullest implementation, worst-case scenario, would be that number, perhaps. So if we could talk about setting a different target, certainly, but.
I would also think that, you know, that we have to keep in mind the financial aspect of implementing this and taking it as a longer rollout would probably be easier for us to find ways of making this happen.
Maintaining it.
Of course, right. But eight years is a long time to be planning with any, you know. Any of you still have kids in school in eight years?
I would, I would like to.
You will, too.
I don't want to think about it, actually, but, because she's going to remain under 18 for the rest of her life. I'd like to look at getting a more aggressive timeline. I do think, look at options to do it, right? I think, Mike, Mr. Mackin's point about the financial aspect is definitely something we need to look at. There are options, other options, that I think your IT director can look at versus buying all new devices right at one time that have to be replaced at exactly that. There may be some options there. The other question, so I'd like us to take a look at that. 2022 is, 2022 is not even anything I can think of. The second thing is, within that, will there be a bring-your-own-device policy thought about as part of this plan?
We had not included a bring-your-own-device policy in this because of a commitment that we felt that these devices are such an integral part of the learning environment that we want to guarantee that all students are provided that device. So we hadn't considered a bring-your-own-device.
I do think it warrants at least a look at, because currently, all your students in the high school are bringing their own devices likely, and they will continue to bring devices. And it may be an option where we can look at, certain students may want to opt out of the device that is offered to them by the district, because they already have the same device or a similar device, and it may be a way to save. But I do think we do need to look at a bring-your-own-device policy no matter what, I think.
So I think it's fine to have your team look at the opportunities and challenges, but keep in mind that with our limited IT people.
Yep.
Supporting all those platforms is probably not something we can actually afford to do.
And that's why in your bring-your-own-device policy, you get hyper. And that's why in your bring-your-own-device policy, you get hyper-prescriptive about what is allowed and what is not allowed.
Sure. So it's, I think it's very reasonable to have Loxy and the IT team think about this and come back with recommendations.
Yep. I certainly think that, you know, when the policy committee has to, you know, address it, that's going to be a larger piece of work than some of the other things.
Yes.
You know, we might want to think about a larger group for that rather than just, you know, the policy committee.
Let's see what the plan looks like first, and then I can figure out where to go from there.
So just to be clear, we want to make sure that we consider and look at a bring-your-own-device option within this. And we want to decrease, or we want to have a sooner deployment rather than 6th through 12th provided a mobile technology by FY '22, right?
Absolutely no later than FY '22 would be the, you know, but I think it makes sense to present options, right? If it's really cost-driven, if that's the primary consideration, then you can lay out an annual cost versus implementation date.
Okay.
Sort of strategy, I think. Other thoughts, questions on any of the goals, or?
All right, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve these goals, or?
Salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion on them, changes? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. All right, we're up to policies, and we have a few, a couple of policies for a second reading. The service animal policy, we're not going to have a second reading today. We received substantial feedback, and the policy committee is going to take another look at that one and incorporate that feedback. Same for the fingerprinting policy, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we're just up to background checks and school lunch.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have any feedback on those two particular policies?
We did not receive any feedback on those two.
Okay. So we were...
Well, we did receive some feedback at the last school committee meeting around some language and the wording in sentences, and we incorporated that into the changes. But since we posted them, we haven't received any additional feedback.
So those policies that we've just said we're not acting on tonight will go back again, and will come back to us as a second reading?
They will come back as a first reading because they will be revised and at any...
Okay. So right now, it's just the background checks and the school lunch?
That's right.
The Cory and school lunch.
Yep.
Oh, Cory and school lunch, okay.
Yes. Yeah, not the fingerprinting. That's one.
Gotcha.
Okay, any, anybody have any other comments or thoughts on those that you want to bring up? Okay, then I'll accept a motion to defer the second reading or to waive the second reading of those policies and encourage the public to get on the website, look at the policies, and give us feedback before our next meeting.
So...
You would be the mover?
Um, no.
Is there a second?
Salute.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And for what it's worth, the policy committee's planning to meet on the 11th. If anybody wants to join us, I don't know that we've nailed down a time yet. Sometime we'll post it and let everybody know. And we'll be reviewing the fingerprinting and the service animals policies at that point.
And we'll also have some policies, Dr. Berthume, around some work we did today with the CHIPS, which is collaborative for high-performance schools. It's the sustainable and green school initiatives. And with those, there are a couple areas where we may need to modify our policy to make sure that it's the most current language and thrust, as well as perhaps bring a couple new ones to the table as well. So we are working with those to have those prepared for the subcommittee meeting next week in order to continue moving those forward. Okay?
Great. Is there any public comment from board? Any public comment from the public? Okay, we have reports. FinCom must be meeting tomorrow.
But I haven't been this summer to the FinCom. Sorry about that.
School councils haven't been meeting?
Not yet.
ETO, probably not yet? Okay. Policy Subcommittee, as I mentioned, will be having our first meeting next week. Capital Planning is, who's on Capital Planning at this point? I've forgotten.
I was hoping we decided that. Is it still me?
It is still.
That's right. We didn't, I was trying to think of which were the ones we didn't
do. We didn't, yeah. I would love for somebody else to have an opportunity to be on the Capital Planning Committee.
Anyone like to be on Capital Planning Committee?
When do they meet?
They meet during the day, I think.
Oh, it's a daytime one?
Yeah, it has been in the past. No, there's somebody new.
But Marion is not doing that anymore, right? So perhaps their time will move.
But I was on it the last four years, and it was during the day.
I think that's pretty much typical of them. Yeah, what you're alluding to, there'll be a new director of planning.
Right.
That will be appointed at some point soon.
I'm not able to do daytime meetings at that time of day.
No, I can do a daytime meeting.
Okay.
That's why I'm going to, no, I won't take it.
Do you mind taking that?
No, I'll take it.
Okay. Would someone make a motion that Heather? I may make a motion that Heather be the representative to the Capital Planning Committee. Okay, second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Heather. Your second, so we should let...
It's very informative.
Wellness Advisory Committee probably hasn't been meeting yet?
No, I believe there's a meeting scheduled, but it hasn't met yet. No.
Oh, no, I just got the dates. It's the 17th.
Is that you?
Yeah, that's me. And I just got the dates from, yes, meets the 17th at 3:45.
Okay.
Which one?
At Turkey Hill.
Paccel?
I don't know who that is.
That's me, too, but I don't know what their meeting dates are yet for this year.
Okay. And the Building Reuse Committee, I believe, has been meeting, right? They have not been meeting, okay. Great. Items for future discussion. One of the things we talked about last year was having a workshop to discuss student performance. And we had decided to do that sort of after the MCAS data become available this fall. I'd like to suggest the 29th of October because I think that's a Wednesday when, when we don't meet and School Building Committee shouldn't meet. Looks like Brendan can't make that day. How about, I'd rather not do a weekend if we don't have to, but we can.
Like in the evening?
Yes.
Sort of?
Why don't we do it by email? Just, I think MCAS should be available by the end of October generally. So if you could just let me know what days you're available after, after the 29th, evenings, or if Saturday is a better, we can do a Saturday. We'll put that together. Okay. Any other items for future discussion?
Didn't we want to set goals? Did you want to set goals for the school committee?
We do need to set goals.
That you talked about.
Yeah, we, I didn't set a, a quorum was not easy to achieve this summer, so that was not feasible. But if you guys have dates you want to sit down and talk about goals in the next month or so?
Another workshop, right?
Another workshop, yep. Think about your dates and let me know. Or we can do it right now.
I assume we're looking for weeknights for that as opposed to weekends as well?
That's my preference, but I don't know, I, you know, we all have to be able to be there, or most of us, anyway.
I have a system calendar currently.
Okay, so we'll, I'll send around some dates tonight, and you can throw darts at it and let me know. Okay. Anything else? All right, I think we're about to have a world record. Since we do not have the need for executive session, is there a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
At 8:40, we adjourn.
Seven forty.
Seven forty, seven forty.